First, we'll start with roll call. I'm Craig Koloji, Chairman. Tom Caroche.
Here.
Chris Nagy. This is absent. Asajazi.
Here.
Doug Wuznum.
Here.
Jeff Schmel.
Here.
And Jennifer Peters.
Here.
You all stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Two items of business before we get started on the agenda. First of all, Jennifer Peters would like to make a statement.
Sure. Jennifer Peters, due to a conflict of interest--
Can't hear you.
Microphone.
Due to a conflict of interest, I'll be recusing myself. I've been employed by St. Louis.
So in that, you're recusing yourself, Jennifer, from the Bethlehem Landfill Company discussion and both direct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There was, on an earlier agenda, there was a formal sketch plan for a project on Fire Lane. If anybody's here for that tonight, they have withdrawn from tonight's agenda, so they will not be presenting.
Yeah, the applicant couldn't make it this evening, so it'll come back before your time point in the future.
Is that gonna be, like, rescheduled then? So just keep an eye on the published agendas, and when they resubmit, when they ask to be heard again, it'll show up on the agenda. So just keep an eye on that. So that's, at this point, it's just a sketch plan, so there wouldn't be any formal actions taken anyway, but yeah, just keep an eye on the agenda.
But it'll be up to the applicant as to whether--
Yeah.
If he asks for it to be heard by planning and when he may--
Before you get started, Craig, if I could just briefly point out to the Planning Commission and members of the audience, the reason that we're here this evening regarding the application submitted by the Bethlehem Landfill Company. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Planning Commission to review and discuss the application and submission, and to make a recommendation to council regarding whether or not the application meets the township zoning, SADO, and other applicable ordinance requirements. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about this issue over the past couple of years, however, this meeting's purpose is to see if the application meets the ordinance requirement. It's not about whether landfills are a good idea or a bad idea, it's about whether the application meets the requirements.
And this is meeting the requirements of the recently adopted ordinance?
Yes, it's the zoning ordinance that was recently adopted, as well as other portions of the zoning ordinance and the SADO. And that's why you have a Hanover Engineering Review Letter that was issued going through those sections, and that's primarily the purpose of tonight's discussion.
Okay. All right. Any questions on that from the commission? Okay. Thanks. All right, so we'll move into the public comment for items that are on the agenda. So we just have the one item tonight on the agenda, the Bethlehem Landfill Company. We--
Have a sheet?
Do we ever do the roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. That's it.
So we have the signing sheet, and so we'll--
Are they gonna--
The agenda item is public comment prior to their presentation. If you're not too focused on until after, we can do that as well. It's up to you.
It doesn't matter.
Well, you know--
I mean, they're presentation.
Okay.
I mean, I would think that they'd wanna present first.
Yeah. Yeah, let's have them present first, and then we'll move on to public comment. Please state your names and who you represent.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Mary Ann Barber, and I'm outside legal counsel for Bethlehem Landfill Company.
And Joe McGow with Martin &amp; Martin, project engineer.
Okay. Yeah, do you want-- So we have a letter from Hanover, an October 19 review letter. I don't know if you want to just give a general overview of the project, or if you wanna go into the gist of the letter.
Thank you. Yeah, so I thought, so we're here on the preliminary land development and lot consolidation plan for the Phase 5 expansion. We submitted that on September 11, and there was a Planning Commission meeting in September. We had not yet gotten a review letter from Hanover because of the timing, but we did ask permission to come and present sort of the overall project to the Planning Commission last month. And I know that everybody wasn't there to hear that, so I thought we would start out with sort of an overall review, presentation of the project, generally speaking, and then we can talk about the Hanover engineering letter, which we got on Friday of last week.
Okay.
So we had appeared before the Planning Commission back in January 2023 with regard to the Phase 5 expansion in the context of a conditional use application and a proceeding that was required under a prior version of the zoning ordinance. And at that point in time, the project that we were proposing was for 117 acres of disposal area, and we walked through that conditional use plan with this Planning Commission back in January. Since then, we've reduced the size of the disposal area that we're proposing for Phase 5. So it's gone from 117 acres to 86 acres. And Joe is gonna walk us through all of the details of the project, but just to sort of give you a lay of the land, the footprint is now 86 acres. It's further away from the Lehigh River, further away from Bull Run, so we pulled it back to the south. And that also allowed us to increase the amount of conservation easement area that we've been able to offer to the township. Now, you may remember when we were here back in January, we talked about what we were going to propose to offer to the township. We have since offered all of the conservation easement area to the township, 193 acres in total, and that was accepted by the township at their August 30 meeting. So those are, that's conservation easement acreage that is currently in place. And we do have a visual that I can pull up if the commission is interested in seeing where that conservation easement area is. The plan that's on the screen right now shows the conservation easement area on the two parcels on which the expansion is going to be located, but that conservation easement area extends to the west and to the southwest for a total of 193 acres. Is that something that you'd like us to pull up?
If you do have the graphic, have that--
Yeah. So let me just--
I think it's that one, Mary Ann, that exhibit D?
D, yes. Thank you. Nope.
Whoa.
Apologies. Okay, go back to 17N and work with us.
See, I think that shows the hatched area.
Yeah. It's a little bit hard to see on this, but Joe, who's your--
It's, the area that Mary Ann references is this hatched area here is the conservation easement area. So it runs through Motorcycle Club, and then properties to the west of the current landfill is roughly in this area right here. So the Phase 5 expansion is shown on this mapping with this orange boundary here, so you can see its relationship to the existing conservation easement areas that are shown in the hatching.
Can you go back to this? Thank you. Sorry for the confusion there.
What was the blue color on that map?
So the blue color, this is an overlay of the proposed disposal area and the conservation easements that were accepted by the township, overlaying on a visual from the township's multi-municipal comprehensive plan to show that it is consistent with that plan. The blue area that you see is in the comprehensive plan, and that's noted as industrial development area. And so we had prepared this exhibit to show that what we're proposing is consistent with that particular plan in the multi-municipal comp plan. So everything that you see in purple is what the comp plan says is proposed for industrial area.
So just to follow up with that easement, who is gonna be the easement holder?
So the township is named as the easement holder, and like, I don't know if you wanna speak to the third party.
The township is the primary easement holder, and the township is searching for a third party. That would also be required, however, the easement documents all require that court approval be obtained before they are lifted, if they're ever lifted in the future, so--
Okay. Yeah, 'cause we had talked earlier when this first came up about having a third party be a party to that easement--
Yeah. As a-- The township manager has been contacting various different conservation-type agencies to see if they, we can get somebody to be a third party, but it's also in the document that it needs court approval to change anyway. Kind of a belt and suspender.
And it looks like the areas to the west, those shaded areas to the west, those were the plans that the landfill acquired over the years--
Yes.
--for possible-- There were, years ago, there was an expansion plan that moved to the west, closer to Steel City.
Correct.
So this would preclude any expansion in that direction?
Absolutely. So the properties directly to the west are owned by Bethlehem Landfill Company. The property to the north, what Joe is pointing, that's actually a property owned by the Bushville Valley Motorcycle Club, and we have an agreement with the Motorcycle Club pursuant to which they've agreed to put a conservation easement on that portion of their property, so it will not be developed in any way. So the disposal footprint has gotten smaller, the conservation easement area has gotten bigger, but otherwise, the project is, as we described it to you back in January, in that it is going to allow for continuation of the Bethlehem landfill with no change in their operations. It's the same type of waste, it's the same amount of waste that they're allowed to accept on a daily basis, so there's no increase in what we're allowed to take, either in type or amount. It's the same days of operation, the same hours of operation, it's the same access road that the waste trucks and our employees will be using. We did acquire a property to the east. Joe, if you can show that, so that's what people call the former tank farm property, and that has a driveway associated with that that's existing, and we're proposing to use that driveway for emergency access and maintenance, but not for trucks or employees or anything about our ongoing business operation. So same access, same equipment, so really, it's just a continuation of the existing business as it has been operating in the township for many, many years. We're here for preliminary land development approval. This project is also going to require a major permit modification to the site's DEP solid waste permit. That is a rigorous, robust, very long review process. We have not yet submitted our application to do that, but that will be the next step once we get, if we are given preliminary land development approval, then the next step, probably within the next seven to 10 months.
Seven to 10 months. We need to use some additional groundwater testing.
Then we would be submitting that DEP application. We need to come in ultimately and get final land development approval from the township, and that final land development approval would be conditioned upon us obtaining not only the major permit modification to our solid waste permit, but any other permits that would be required. For example, any permits required with respect to wetlands or anything to that effect. So that's sort of the process, and we're here for preliminary land development. As I, as we discussed, we have the Hanover letter, but I think at this point, it would make sense-- Joe, if you could bring up the other visual, and we'll have Joe walk you through the details of the project, and then we can walk through the letter. The other parts of the letter.
And this is Sheet 11 of 29. It's not the exact sheet that's in the set. We have made some changes to that. We've added some color for presentation. We've also taken off some detail from what is in Sheet 11 of 29 on the set, but we're trying to use this as an exhibit that can be easier read by everyone. So at the top of the page is the Lehigh River, Riverside Drive. Bottom of the page here is Apple Butter Road. The existing landfill is located approximately in this area. It's shown here in white, and we have cell identifiers on that area. The last approval was associated with the northern realignment here, these three cells. This was the last approval that we sought through the township. Prior to that, there was a southeastern realignment that was generally located in this area. The proposed expansion, the proposed lateral expansion, as Mary Ann discussed, of being 86 acres, is encompassed and shown here by this gray or purple area in this location, as well as we have a small expansion laterally over here to the west. As Mary Ann said, the total is 86 acres. There's about 82 here, a little over 2, about 3 and 1/2 here, as far as expansion's concerned. If we talk about this area to the west first, this is proposed in order to close off the existing landfill to the west. As we just discussed, there was previous plans for a western expansion in this area, so what we call is intermediate grades were put in this area here. Waste was placed, and so this lateral expansion will allow us to close that off at final grades, meeting all regulatory requirements, without the benefit of any waste relocation. So there will be some additional waste placed here to allow that to be closed off and meet all the regulations of the state, and to get final grade slopes in this area. So this is part of that expansion, and the only reason for that expansion is to close that area off. The vast majority of Phase 5 is located here. For reference, the existing landfill office scale is located here off of Apple Butter Road. This is the current access to the landfill for our waste trucks, employees, and operations. This will continue to be the access off of Apple Butter Road. We propose to extend an access road around the perimeter of the Phase 5 expansion to access the cells for waste placement, and then continue a road around the entire perimeter of the facility as maintenance facility. So roughly from about this area back here to this southeastern tie-in will be the main access and haul route to the cells. From this point up around and tying into the northern area, those will be just maintenance roads for access. As part of this expansion, there is a MSE berm, mechanically stabilized earthen berm or wall, that is proposed roughly in this area, if I can point to that, that runs through here. Average feet, average height on that wall is 50 feet. 50-foot elevation change that occurs along this line with an MSE berm or wall.
And that would be a vegetated--
That would have a vegetated face. There are existing MSE berms or walls that, one is located here, which was developed as part of Cell 4F. Also, as part of the southeastern realignment, there was an MSE berm and wall placed roughly in this location. From a stormwater management standpoint, there are two large basins here showing in blue that are proposed to collect the vast majority of the Phase 5 expansion area. As fill is placed in the, in this area of expansion, for every 25 vertical feet of elevation, we would have what we call a bench to direct water runoff laterally, and so there would be collection benches along the face of the landfill that would direct it to these two locations for treatment and then discharge from the side. The structures that would serve the Phase 5 expansion are generally located here. We show those in yellow. There are two proposed leachate storage tanks. Those tanks are in the process of being sized. We think we have adequate reserved area for that. Analysis that has to be done through development of the landfill to determine the amount of leachate that would be generated through the process of development. And one that I can talk a little bit about, you know, how this facility would be developed. We would not go in and remove all of the existing-- But the vast majority of this footprint is wooded. We would not go in and remove everything inside this red boundary from a woodland standpoint. We would clear, clear cut everything. Our proposal, and we have this outlined on-- No, I lost my pointer here. Okay. Maybe I'm running low on battery. There we go. So our starting point for this northeastern area is Cell 5B.
I mean, 5A first.
Yeah, 5A is first, this western area that we discussed. This is Cell 5A. 5B is located here. This would be our initial development area, so in order to develop this cell of the landfill, there will be clearing of the woodlands, generally in this area here, in order to develop the infrastructure to support the cell development, including the stormwater management facility, and then that portion of the MSE berm that would be required to support development of the cell. So this MSE berm runs laterally roughly here. That construction would generally stop about here to allow for this initial cell development, and then as this is developed through excavation, we would construct the perimeter infrastructure to serve it. Then waste would be placed over time. Once we reach a final grade, that would be capped, and then the next cell would be developed. So as we develop the landfill as an expansion, it is essentially piece field in that, you know, this piece would be cleared, developed, then we would move to the next piece, and so on, and so on, and so on. And there's, I think, nine different cells as we go through the entire Phase 5 expansion to the northeast.
And Joe, when you're in any given cell, can you just briefly describe how that cell is built out in that, like, what is the size of an active disposal area at any given time, and what are the coverage requirements for that?
Yeah, so as we develop the cell, we would initially place the liner system, which the top end of the liner system would be protective cover, which would be aggregate prior to placement of any waste. And then there would be a waste place on a daily basis. That waste would be covered. The area that waste is being placed, as we call the active area, is a small postage stamp of that total cell as we go through the process of filling each individual piece. So there, there's a stage approach to it in that we place the waste, cover that waste on a daily basis, and then additional waste as we rise in elevation. Generally, you know, there was a question, I think, last time about height. Generally, we're, you know, 150 feet from bottom elevation, which is not quite clear at this point, to a top elevation in any given individual cell.
Joe--
That ranges as we, as you move from north being the top of the page here, south being the bottom, the north side is the lower side of the site, and then as far as height at the top side towards the south end of the facility, there would be a ridge line roughly about in here of elevation 725. We'll go 725. That's 725 feet above sea level. That will tie in, and that is the maximum permitted elevation allowable on the existing landfill, and that will continue through the Phase 5 expansion. So generally, there will be a ridge developed roughly in this area. Everything's sloping to the north. There's a small area in here that slopes to the south. Most of that goes to this facility here, but we are directing some of that to an existing basin that's located here called Base 2. With regard, while we're talking about basins, there's a Basin 6 that is located here, and that is gonna collect the runoff, stormwater runoff from that western expansion area.
Joe, just going back to the sequencing of the cell build-out, once any given cell is full, can you just describe what the cover requirements are, and in terms of vegetation, how does that work?
Yeah, so once we fill the cell, then there would be the placement of a cap, a liner cap atop that, and then the last placement there is 24 inches of soil, and then the current closure system calls for brass vegetation to be placed. We have had some discussions, not only with this one, but in the past, about additional vegetation, shrubs, trees, flowers, wildflowers, those types of things, and so, you know, we're evaluating that as far as the possibility of dislocation.
The limitations, the primary limitation on the vegetation that we can put on the cap is that it has a shallow enough root system so that it doesn't compromise the cap, but, you know, beyond that, there are lots of creative things that can be done that we're happy to discuss.
I think also integral to the stormwater management system that is proposed for the expansion is these green circles that you see here in this area, roughly in this area here, a smaller one here, and then some additional ones located down through here. Those are all trees being proposed as part of the project. In total, there's a little over 4,000 trees being proposed. Those are not, you know, whips. Some people say that those are meeting the requirements of the ordinance, 2-inch, 2-and-1/2-inch caliber trees, 5 foot and a half at the time of planting. So those would all be developed, so as Mary Ann was saying, as this cell is developed and we reach final grade and close these areas off, to the extent we can develop those trees, those trees would be developed at the same time that are adjacent to the cells as they develop. So those trees would develop over time with the cell development as well.
Joe, can you also just--
Oh, sorry. Quick question. The ridge that you spoke about, that's the highest point, I presume?
Correct.
That is closer to the bottom down there?
Yeah, it's roughly through here. The existing ridge on the landfill is roughly in here, and then that ridge would continue across here.
If that's your highest point, does that give you, I mean, you're the engineer, does that give you enough left for your steep slope? So if you have much steeper slope from that ridge coming down--
Coming down this way? Yeah. Well, the existing grade in this area is higher, so in total, I think it's about 325 feet of elevation difference between existing grade, and the existing grade peak elevation is roughly in this area. So as that peak moves, now we have slope to head everything to the south--
Okay.
--as the, you know, on the top of the facility as part of final grading, we need to maintain a 3% slope across the top ridge. So there'll be a flat area on top before we hit the 3:1 slopes with the benching down the side that, you know, you can see already on the existing landfill in this area, if you're familiar with it, views there. So it would look the same, but in the top here, there would be a flatter plateau. It has a 3% slope, which is what you might see in a parking lot. So it's fairly flat in comparison to the overall terrain.
These alternative vegetation approaches that you talked about, would that apply to the entire landfill or only this new expanded portion?
Well, what is already closed is already vegetated. Whether we would go in and put supplemental vegetation on-- Whether we would go in and put supplemental vegetation on existing closed areas of the landfill, again, I think we'd be open to discussion about that, but that's already closed and vegetated. So what we're, we will be talking about here is Phase Five.
Yeah, so as part of the current permitting for the landfill, there is an approved closure plan through DEP. If we were to propose any changes with that, we'd have to go back through the DEP process to get those approvals with the Northeast region. So we'd have to get there by, and do a different type of cap and vegetation that's currently allowable by the...
Yeah, I only ask if you are going to try and do something maybe a little more innovative or more naturally looking, I think it would make sense to apply that to the entire site rather than just a portion of it.
Joe, can you explain what the green color is particularly on the southeastern portion of the property?
Yeah, so this solid green area is representative of existing woodlands that are to remain undisturbed. So there is no disturbance proposed, no tree removal or anything proposed in these green areas that you see around the perimeter of the development. That extends here down the natural gas pipeline, and then on both sides of Bull Run and the entire area along Riverside Drive, as well as this piece through here where the overhead electric lines are. So that green area is representative of areas that are to remain undisturbed. In this area where the hatching is indicated, those would be protected through a conservation easement as well. But the disturbance is a little bit further, the limit of disturbance is a little bit further south than what that hatching is. So that conservation easement, losing my battery I think here, but that conservation easement stops here. We're 100 feet back from that, so a buffer between that conservation easement and where the limits of disturbance are for the proposed raging associated with Phase Five. In addition to the 100 feet, we're also further back from where actual waste disposal would be. Closest point to a property line to any waste disposal is 400 feet. I think the ordinance allows for up to 100 feet to the property line where it's 400 foot.
And can you also just explain the white area around the proposed tanks as well as that supplemental landscaping that's proposed?
Sure. In this area, in the late 70s, there was development which occurred here. There were two large tanks that were developed along with some concrete pads and accesses and all of the things servicing those tanks. I've come to understand that those tanks were used for fuel storage, 8 million gallons, I believe, for each tank is what I heard was reported. Those tanks are ultimately to be removed.
And just to be clear, we had thought, they were scheduled to be removed. We thought they had been removed. They're still in place. Mr. Kuroci had asked a question about, because we had thought that they were removed, whether there was any sort of investigation upon the removal. There certainly will be when they're removed. And in addition, when Bethelon Landfill Company acquired the property, there was a Phase One that was conducted of the property, and there were, of course, no evidence of any releases from those tanks and no evidence of any soil or staining or soil or anything like that.
So this area right here was developed, again, in the late 70s. Everything that you see here roughly in white is currently impervious areas of either concrete pads, tanks, lined lagoons, a myriad of things. And so our proposal here is to remove that impervious area, reestablish brass vegetation in that area, not only in this area shown by white, but also areas like this that are shown in white. Those would ultimately be vegetated. We struggled with getting too many greens on the plan, then it gets confusing. But this area would all be vegetated, and we're even adding some additional trees here as part of the landscape planning. So the net result from the Phase Five development by removing that impervious area is actually a reduction in impervious area over the whole 503-acre property.
What am I forgetting?
I guess I would point out too, you know, we talked about outside permits. There are some existing wetlands that are roughly located in this area, fairly smaller wetlands, but wetlands nonetheless. And there are some streams that were identified in here. Those streams were identified by meeting the definition of DEP's stream, which is having a defined bed and bank. So when we say stream, you know, you envision Bull Run, you know, flowing stream. These are not flowing streams. They have their base flow to them, but they do show indications of a defined bed and banks, and we've identified those along with the wetlands. And as part of the Phase Five expansion, we will have to seek what's called a joint permit between DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers to be able to impact those and provide appropriate mitigation for those impacts. So this expansion, as it's envisioned here, relies upon obtaining that permit.
Quick question. The tank area, did you say the tanks are still there?
The tanks are still there. I think we reported, I think not only at this meeting, but at EAC, that we thought they were already removed. That is not the case. They still exist. And, you know, they're planned for removal. And, you know, when those tanks are removed, they'll be removed by a certified operator for their removal. And as part of that removal, there would be some testing that would be done once they're removed to ensure that there were no leaks associated with those tanks in the past. As Mary Ann said, there was a study done previously when the landfill took over ownership of that. And that analysis looked at the entire property that we call the Tank Farm, the 89 acres, and recorded no concerns or any environmental concerns.
Yeah, the Phase One is not typically going to show you anything really, but once you do the tank closure, you're going to need to take samples and have a closure report and go indicate if there's any impact or reason or not.
Yeah, and they're on the registry of these tanks, most of those tanks. So that'll be a process we'll have to get through.
Thank you.
Were those tanks supplied via pipeline?
I don't know. As I read through the report, there was some indication that there was a pipeline that served those. At the time the report was done, and I think there was one, I think it was 2019 or 18 when this latest report was done, but there was one that was done previously, and that line had been cut. And there was a visual indication that there appeared to be leaks or staining of any soils or any indicators of environmental concerns.
Thank you. I just have one question, maybe like, maybe this is a question you can answer. Who, at the end of the day, is going to make sure that all the trees that are being promised, the 4,000 trees that are going to be planted, who's going to oversee that?
I think the answer is it's kind of a joint project. DEP, I mean, DEP has jurisdiction to make sure that the plan looks like the plan that they approved, and the township has jurisdiction to make sure the plan looks like the plan that we approved. So both DEP and township.
I'm just, I'm a developer, so I know how, you know, my projects are relatively short, two, three years. I'm walking out the door, but everybody who was sitting in the room, and I mean, all my promises are still there, two or three years will have gone to make sure everything I promised is going in. I'm looking at this, something that's getting years down the road, maybe not, or somebody here.
Well, we'll have to, and we will have to post security with the township for all of the landscaping that's proposed.
So be bonded.
Yes.
And there's a requirement to replace dead, dead or dying trees, right? That don't survive.
Yeah, I think there's a standard agreement.
18-month maintenance area.
I mean, I will say, because there will be a certain mortality rate with those trees, there, Longwood Garden is actually doing a reforestation study right now, experimenting with different-sized trees and understoryed plants. And that might be a good resource to go to for coming up with a successful reforestation. But just following up on a comment about the stormwater, the new stormwater basins. You talked about, you talked about treatment and discharge. So what type of treatment did involve with the stormwater?
So the major aspect of the treatment aspect for stormwater is the benching off of the landfill. In total, there's about seven miles of vegetated channel in the end, once we have all of the benches developed. So one, it is collecting that, running that through vegetation, a vegetated channel, and then conveying that to an extended detention stormwater management facility. So in that facility, there is evapotranspiration that's occurring, as well as through the vegetated channels that are conveyed. So those are the main aspects of the treatment. We talked about, and we've talked about this a number of times on previous expansions, about infiltration, is that a good idea, is that not a good idea? We always went on the side of the conservative approach to say, let's not promote infiltration, but let's not line the basins as well. So, you know, will there be some infiltration? Likely. But that, the stormwater management plan does not rely upon infiltration for its function.
So is there any monitoring of, water quality monitoring of the discharge?
Yeah, so there is currently a NPDS permit for industrial activities, which is the landfill, that currently monitors all of the discharge points from the existing landfill. Upon development of the new discharge points, that permit would be modified, and those monitoring points would be identified and put into the regime of continued testing and recording.
Is that done monthly or quarterly or after every storm? What's the frequency for that?
I believe it's quarterly, but I, I mean, I can check on that. I don't know if it's a monthly. I feel like it's quarterly, but...
But that'll be a modification as part of the permit, but that happens really after the development of the facility.
Sure.
Not so monitoring. So is there any benchmarking done of the street, you know, where the discharge will be, if it's going to, like, if it's going to Bull Run? Is there any benchmarking of current water quality versus, you know, pre and post-development type monitoring?
I'm not aware of any requirement for that, but I believe DEP does that as part of their benchmarking for our discharge criteria, so that they evaluate the waters of the Commonwealth of Bull Run, understanding TMVLS or any type of pollutants that are both Bull Run, Lehigh Valley, or Lehigh River, and that becomes part of the permit regime for discharge criteria.
Have you ever encountered, maybe if a certain water quality measure is being exceeded or being degradated, have you dealt with that before in any of the situations?
I mean, as far as violations of that...
Or just, I mean, so are there, there was actually permit criteria for the storm basin discharges as well?
Yes.
Okay. So a violation, is there additional treatment methods you incorporate or would...
Sure. Depending on, you know, what is encountered, there are additional, you know, criteria that's put in place that can go from, you know, we've had sites that, you know, are , have unique types of discharges from industrial activities. So those, you know, in some instances have a full wastewater treatment system that you would see that is incorporated and designed for all stormwater discharges from their site, or just try to segregate what is causing the pollution. So yeah, absolutely. I think DEP monitors that. There's reporting that has to be done. There's criteria that's set. And so, you know, any exceedances of those are subject to notice of violation and requirement upon maintaining that permit to continue the industrial operation, one must come in compliance with it.
Are there any other questions right now, or should we move to the Hanover letter?
Yeah, the issue here. Yeah, unless there's anything else.
So with respect to the Hanover letter, the comments aren't largely technical engineering comments, and we've looked at the letter, and we will be addressing all of those technical comments. There are some items in need of clarification, but I thought it probably made sense for us to walk through what are more planning-type comments, I think, that are, you know, that we have some responses to that we can let the committee know about tonight. But we're obviously going to be preparing a submittal in response to this letter with all of the necessary revisions to the plans.
Yeah, that's good. I've identified some of those.
Oh, good.
As well, that would be beneficial maybe to discuss with the...
Oh, well, do you want to, you want to walk through?
Yeah, if you'd like, I'll hit those items, and if you have other things you'd like, you can do that. The first one that I've identified under subdivision landline ordinance is comment number two. I was not sure which fire department is going to cover the expanded area, but I think either Lower Salken or the City of Bethlehem, and somebody should look at this with respect to the fact that there are no hydrants proposing a new area, and that access road, if they need to get back in there for whatever reason, is pretty tight, and the terms are pretty tight. So I'd like somebody from the fire department to weigh in on that.
So under the amended and restated host agreement, and in fact, under the earlier versions of the host agreement, it's the City of Bethlehem that has primary responsibility for fire, Lower Salken has primary responsibility for police. And so we will reach out to the City of Bethlehem Fire Chief, provide him or her with a copy of the plan, and we'll get the feedback on that. In terms of providing the plan to the Lower Salken Township Police, is that something that we should do independently, or is that something that the township will do?
Has that, can we do it, can we, Joe?
I believe that...
Can we do it to the police?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll wait for that. All right, the next one then is the Saldo number eight. The existing single-family homes that you purchased are on Riverside Drive. What's the ultimate intent of the goal?
So those are on these parcels that Joe is pointing to right now. They call them the Flowers Parcel and the Han's Parcel, the Han Parcel. So there are two single-family homes, one on each of those. And they are currently single-family residences, and the people in those homes from whom we purchased the properties, they have a right to stay there until October of next year, at which point then they will be vacant and ultimately taken down.
Okay.
So your plan can reflect that?
Yes. All right, next Saldo number 11. It looked like some of the symbols around the tanks may have been what I would consider light standard-type symbols. Are you proposing lighting in that area? We are not proposing getting lighting in this area. There's existing lighting that was previously developed. We're proposing to utilize that for our lighting needs associated with those structures. We are going to evaluate that to see if any of those, you know, are, can be removed, or if there's any type of adjustment that would need to be done. But we're going to do some additional evaluation, but no proposed lighting in that area. The proposal is to utilize the existing lights there. And we'll update the plan to clearly identify those as existing and what is to remain, or if there are some to be removed. Okay, great. All right, next Saldo number 18, the sewer comments. You will get us what your flow projections are. Because that'll be used for a variety of different things. The city's going to have certified capacity. We'll have to do a planning line. Most importantly, the Apple Butter Road sewer line has some capacity left in it reserved for the township, so we'd like to see if this actually cuts into, cuts into that number. And the city will eventually have to sign off on your leachate management system to tell us if it's okay. And is all that, I think, Joe, you reviewed all that. Yeah, I will, we can... Yeah, I will, we can provide all of that information. It'll be, you know, part of the DEP application as we do the modeling. Leachate generation is based upon landfill area that is exposed versus that which has intermediate graves, which has intermediate cap and final cap. So there's different stages to it. So that modeling needs to be prepared, analyzed, to come up with what the total projected flow of leachate at any given time during the development of the facility. So that's, that's in process, and we can get that in.
And I guess what we won't have are those projections for the preliminary land development, and we would suggest or request respectfully that that be a condition of the preliminary land development approval, that when we prepare those projections in connection with the DEP application, that we'll provide them to the township.
Okay. Just a quick question on that. How does the leachate get to the tank?
So the leachate is collected through piping within the cell on top of the liner. There's a primer and a secondary collection system, and it would be piped through pressurized piping, double-contained piping to the tankage. And then from that tankage to an existing point on the landfill where it's conveyed via sewer to the P of the T W.
Which is the wastewater treatment plant?
Which is the wastewater treatment.
Whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, one of my comments was the warning line shown on there, and I have looked at the DEP plans for the Northern Realignment, and I see you've got a lot of detail on there of those lines.
Yes.
These plans should probably refer to that. The DEP plan said that will eventually be prepared for this.
Yeah.
Rather than showing them out here, there's so much detail on those. That explains everything Joe just asked.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, just through notation, reference the. So there's a pump, a pump station related to each cell?
There is a pump station related to each sump, not each individual cell. So in this instance, the vision currently is about three sump areas, so the load points of the cell, so one located here, here, and possibly down in this location, where the leachate collection lines would convey to that sump area through excavation. Then it is pumped through a lift pump out of that sump, and conveyed to the leachate storage tank. But all of those lines are double-contained pipes, conveyance, all meeting DEP's regulations. It's a leachate management system, it's a whole section of the DEP application that deals with that. And there are numerous regulations that we have to follow in dealing with handling of the leachate.
Okay, then in the stormwater management section number 26, I had identified, you've already indicated that you will need to get the permits to remove those streams and wetlands, and that would be a condition.
Absolutely.
And I would note, it does look like, the system of channels that you previously described and lateral movement over to the stormwater basin will decrease the amount of water hitting Riverside Drive.
Absolutely, yeah. I didn't touch on that with this, but in this area, I think some referred to as the Narrows, this proposed development, because of the lateral movement of the water through benching, there will be a diversion of this upslope area that's currently conveying to the Narrows area over to the stormwater management facility proposed, in hopes of alleviating some of that concern in that area by reducing drainage area too.
Okay, then under the zoning ordinance number 11, you touched upon the existing driveway to the tank area, that you're going to use that as an emergency access, and somehow, how are you intending to portray that, number one on the plan, and then number two operationally?
So I was going to identify it, you know, and flag it on here, then add some notations to it with regard to prohibition of any employees, waste trucks, any type of operations using that for access, so I was going to identify it in that way. There's also a gate, which I believe exists, and we will maintain to secure the, it's a gated facility.
If that's there, I didn't see that on the plan, but the detail's very small in the area, so you want to accent that? And what are you doing up in the new section where the road is being constructed between the tanks and the access road? That's probably a spot for signage too, so the trucks and police don't leave from that.
Absolutely, yes. Yes, we can add some signage there.
Okay, and then zoning ordinance number 12, where we talk about, the ordinance requires an earthen berm, and you're going to ask the township to not put the earthen berm in, leave the existing landscape, and very similar to what you did on the previous ones. I don't know, did Joe touch on that in his presentation?
I did not.
We did not, but yes, I mean, there's a zoning ordinance requirement that requires an earthen berm, but also there's a provision in the ordinance that says that council can make a finding that the existing vegetation serves the same purpose that an earthen berm would serve. And in this case, as well as with the Northern Realignment and the Southeastern Realignment, we requested similar exceptions from that based on the ordinance, because it would otherwise require the removal of existing trees to then put an earthen berm in, and the existing vegetation, and here in particular, with all the conservation easements, that this serves as a better buffer than any kind of man-made earthen berm. So we're asking for relief from that provision.
All right, and then lastly, number 15, you will have to dedicate your shy 93 acres for your access resource utilization according to the ordinance and/or fees if council accepts that. I would note, Joe, during your presentation, you talked about that the woodlands, as the cells develop, you wouldn't remove woodlands until you develop a certain cell, which means that most of the woodlands will remain early on, they'll be taken out as the cells develop. I didn't see that on the plans anywhere, or can you put that on the plans? So that everything doesn't just get clear cut in the first three days?
Yeah, we can give some thought, you know, we have the cell development schedule on some sheets that, you know, maybe we can add some notations or delineations of approximate edge of, you know, woodlands to remain, so we can work on, try and present something there.
All right, yeah, so that we don't have what I just said, that everything you don't need to cut down shouldn't be cut down.
Right.
Correct. And I guess then the statement on the waivers, the waivers you're requesting look just like the waivers you've asked for in the previous plans you brought in here, all because this is a self-contained landfill, private operation. I mean, I don't want to speak for you, but I just wanted council to know, I mean, planning commission to know that the waivers look just like the previously granted. So that's, that's all I had.
Thank you, yeah, and that's what I had identified in terms of the planning comments. The others, as I had mentioned, are really technical engineering comments, which we can walk through, or, I mean, we haven't seen anything that we won't be able to address, and we can work on getting the plans revised to address all of those to Brian's satisfaction.
Does our engineer have any issue with any of the engineering relief that they're looking for?
No, as long as they're willing to acknowledge that they can address them, I think they are, in present.
Yes, we've looked through them, evaluated them, we believe we can address each element.
Any questions from the commission? I just had a couple of quick ones. So zoning comment number 13, it's related to that, the streams on the property. So I guess any approval would be, because, I mean, that's a variance otherwise, right? We would approve it, and we'd need a variance, because they're located within 100 feet of a bank of many streams.
If they do not get permission to remove and remediate the streams, then yes.
Right.
At that point, they would need a variance.
So, so that would just be a condition, that they would either obtain that or.
Look, if the condition eventually is compliance with the Hanover Reveal Letter, they need to show that they got the proper approval to remove those, or else they got to come up with a different idea.
There was a comment about improvements to existing roads, and I guess in the traffic study, the traffic study identified some areas in need of improvement. I don't know if that was along the road front edge, you talked about signage and drainage, and is noted that the report identified shoulder signage and pavement marking observations, which could be incorporated into recommendations for improvements?
Yeah, I think it's, I don't know that they necessarily need to do anything, but they need to clarify that in their traffic studies as to whether they need to.
No other questions from the commission, we'll open it up to the public comment.
Sign on this here. Victoria OC is the first one.
And just, you know, we do have the three-minute public comment that we're going to adhere to tonight.
Thank you very much. This is the song. I don't know. The very bottom. There you go. Oh. The right one?
Thank you. First, I was hopeful the planning commission had a good opportunity to see that first diagram or picture that was presented during the beginning of the presentation, and it showed the orange line that went around, the overlay of the conservation areas on top of the current, the current multi-municipal plan that Lower Salkin has adopted, had the colors, you were asking about the blue and the green. If you take a very good, if you take a look at that, you'll notice that there is, in the upper right-hand side, a large section of the proposed disposal area, but is sitting over top an area colored green. And that green area on our. It just went out. Just. Maybe we're losing battery here, I don't know. But if you take a look at that plan, you'll see that it is not in conformity with our multi-municipal plan, because we have a large section of disposal area sitting on top of an area that had been designated for rural agricultural or green open space. So I'm hopeful that you can take a look at that. I also am hopeful that you go and take a look at the properties in which they are proposing as conservation areas. If you take a look at them, and as they had indicated, some of you know, they had attempted to do a western expansion in the past, and they had bought residential properties that were developed with homes and driveways and lots of features that you would not consider conservation area. So when you take a look at that, I think you'll see that there's a concern there, that we're losing a large amount of acres of very pristine forest with lots of very special features, and we're replacing this conservation area with basically an abandoned home, or a falling apart home, or a foundation of residence with weeds around it. The other thing important to note is this conservation area they're proposing to give you has a lot of conditions that they can operate and do different things on that land. So it's, I would say, in name only, and I think you should take a look at that, because if you compare what are the conditions of the conservation easements you're losing, and the conditions that are currently on these lots that we don't have a third party for, not surprisingly, because they're not very environmentally sensitive areas, but if you take a look at them, I think you'll be concerned with all of the things they're able to do, including lumbering and doing all kinds of what would be landfill maintenance operations, I consider to be. I see that I have a three-minute stoppage here, so I will respect that, but I also will say that I don't think it's appropriate in a planning commission meeting to be limiting comments to three minutes on a 275-acre proposal when you look at not only the landfill disposal area, but the supporting areas and the issues with these conservation easements. So I appreciate your look, I hope that you do detail and review your planning, review their plan as opposed to the multi-municipal plan, and I think you'll see there's lots of problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gordon Grass.
My eye was cracked, so are we to?
None. I'm not sure we have, now, the general. Can we do? Can, okay. All right, Donna Wilder.
Donna Leder, Lower Salkin. My question is for number 27, section 137-23M, and maybe Brian would even help me out with this one, because you said that all the waiver requests were too much of the neutral. Joe had even mentioned about the three-to-one benches. What is the landfill now as far as the slopes and the benches? Is it three-to-one, or is it two-to-one? It's all three-to-one? And I ask that this commission make it pursue it that it is three-to-one because of stability? I think.
It's required by the DEP regulation to be three-to-one.
Thank you.
That's good.
The two, one just to clarify is for areas outside the landfill disposal area.
The berm's and the base.
The base.
You're saying a three-to-one is required by the DEP?
For the landfill, and that's what I picked, that's what I thought this was. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Dan Alon. Alon. Lynn Hill.
Thank you. I have here a rendering of the area that we're talking about with the Lehigh River. This is a view from Bethlehem Township, looking at our township, with a boat on the river, and, you know, beautiful forest, and a pristine-looking river. So I just want everyone to be aware that what this plan is calling for would be changing the view you see here, and we would be looking at garbage. Also, and I don't, I don't think as planners you would want to sacrifice that valuable environmental resource just so we can serve as a repository for trash mainly coming from the New York metro area. Having trash shipped from the New York metro area to here doesn't motivate anyone to reduce the amount of waste, it only perpetuates the problem that we have now. And we have three landfills in our county, and in total, only about 21% of the waste accepted at the landfills in this county comes from inside our county. I want to elaborate a little bit on the conservation easements, especially Conservation Eastman Area A, which is the area that you see along the river there to the north and east of that map. I encourage you to read this document in full, especially section four, where it talks about restrictions. It names lots of restrictions, but then it names a lot of exceptions, things they can do in the Eastman area, utilities, installing electric, gas, telephone, forest management, the cutting of trees, anything that would support stormwater management, drainage areas, or, there's also quarrying, which is prohibited except, or stormwater management, stream restoration activities, and so forth. So, you know, there are more holes in these conservation easement documents than you could drive a truck through. It also, you know, would. It also, you know, allows for gas wells to be installed in the conservation area. Many, many things, so I encourage you to read this document because it is not a conservation easement as a normal person would recognize one to be. It doesn't help the wildlife, it doesn't help the trees, and it certainly doesn't help our view that we will be losing with this project.
All right, thank you. Priscilla Del Young.
Just one, a quick question for Link on that easement. Was that based on the Conservation Land Trust model?
The, the conservation easements, which are not technically part of this plan application, they're separate from this plan application. They're shown on the plan for illustrative purposes, but the conservation easement document was modeled after the standard conservation easement that the township uses to preserve any property that we purchased with open space money. There are some specific exceptions of things that the landfill can do within those easements to monitor environmental stuff, and to make sure that it's functioning correctly and do things that are positive for the environment. But otherwise, they're, they're conservation easements like we've used for other projects.
Hi, Priscilla Del Young, speaking as a resident. I heard someone say in the beginning of this meeting that there was revisions made. Are we looking at the most current plan? Like, are the plans presented to the township in September? Is that what's up there now, or is that what went to the High Valley Planning Commission? Yes, so all the changes that were made went, okay.
No, no changes, there haven't been any changes. Joe said that this plan doesn't have all the detail on it that the actual sheet 11 or 19 sheet was it?
I misunderstood.
Sheet 11, yes.
Sheet 11 has more detail on it, but to put more detail on it makes it more confusing to understand what's going on.
So, then we also talked about, and thank you, Haas, you stole my comment, about phase one, the environmental review. So that showed, that usually never shows anything for phase one when you do that for a DEP review. And I'm hoping that there's a plan for phase two investigation. I'm not sure if I'm using the right words, DEP uses, but I, I think that the tank farm, because of the history, and we have no idea if there's been any spills in the contaminated ground, and what you're going to do with the contaminated ground, and it raises a lot of questions, so I really, really would hope that a phase two is investigated. Can you show me the outline where the tank farm, the property of 89 acres on that plan? Is, is it, like, embedded in there?
Yeah, this is the current property line here. To the north, then it around, to the round area further.
Okay, thank you. And can you show me where the groundwater divide is on the existing property?
The groundwater divide?
Yeah.
I cannot.
You cannot. Okay, so the nearest monitoring wells to that edge between that and the tank farm, can you show me where there are any monitoring wells?
The monitoring wells aren't shown on the land of the plan, they'll be on the DEP.
Okay, are they shown somewhere on the plan that I could look at?
They'll be on the, the plan that's submitted to DEP.
Which we haven't seen yet, right?
That's correct, because we haven't submitted an application for the DEP permit yet.
Okay. A long time ago, there were, the well that was on, and I'll should probably remember this from the landfill committee because I never forgot this, TW9, it was on the edge of the property boundary, and it showed the highest level of chlorobenzene ever. And that always bothered me, and then for some reason, what happens to these wells that show goods, goods, like, stuff, get run over, they can't produce anymore, and then we don't test them, and then, oops, we have to move them someplace else, and then we lose the data. So I've always wondered if there was other places that would test positive to chlorobenzene. So, anyway, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the names on the list. Ginger Petrie, yes, she's a resident.
Thank you. I have a few things to say, Ginger Petrie. I have a personal interest because my property borders what you have as the eastern edge, and the landfill now has purchased the properties on top of me, not only the tank farm, but going farther to the east, some also private properties that border mine. So I'm speaking as a person with a personal interest. If the earth were flat, this map would look really great. And as you guys sit there and you look at all your facts and everything with planning, I have done some subdivision, I'm familiar with Hanover. I know about BNP's and all the other things that are in engineering. But if you stood at the bottom of this mountain that they're planning on doing this expansion, you would see that it's a mountainside on about a 30% slope. It's totally covered with trees. So it's a forest with a beautiful stream at the bottom, with some little water seepage that comes out from the side of the mountain. There's a lot of rock, there's a lot of animals, and that water goes into the Lehigh River. Now, the slope degree like that, you're talking about, talking about walls as they do each of their sections that are 50 feet high. So if you actually took the time to do a visual, this probably is 20 feet from the floor to the ceiling. And if we're going to start at the bottom, and we're going to do 50-foot walls, then we're going to add trash, and then cover, and trash, and cover, and trash, and cover, until we have 50 feet. Then we're going to move into the next section up. So we're going to keep moving up the mountain, because we can't go from the top down. Now, the trash has to also get there somehow. So there are roads that are going to be coming through this, which means what if there is blasting, if there's rock? We've got a pipeline that runs right alongside of it. I'm only speaking from the person that's going to have to watch all of this happen. You've got a lot of people that are really into environmental studies. You're going to have to deal with the DEP, and at this point, by permitted use, you've taken off all the authority that you've had in the past. And all I'm going to say to you is, before you say it's okay to do all this, because at this point, we're all assuming this is a go, could you please go to the bottom of the mountain and stand there and think about what it's going to be to the young people that you know in 30 years from now, when they call it a super fund, and your names were on the okay? That's all I have to say. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it. Mr. Kurogi. You're not a resident of Lower Salkin Township, nor are you attached there, so you're not recognized. Hold on, sir. Please sit down. For the record, Mrs. Solicitor. Frank, who is Frank Varstein, Purdue. From Move.
No, no, no.
Sir, that would be a poor move.
Frank, did you, are you a resident?
There's note for the record that I intended to speak, and that I cannot.
Thank you.
That's all we had to do, Tom.
I'm a resident. Can I speak?
Sure. If you're a resident, we have not on the list, but you can also...
Would you like me to put it on the list?
No. Tell, tell your name.
And your address.
No, not your address, just your name.
Just your name.
Ed Wenzel, University Avenue. I'm not sure that my question is...
What's your name again?
Ed Wenzel.
Can you spell the last name?
D-Z-E-L. My question is, and I didn't even get the exact acreage, I think it was 86 acres, what was proposed now? How many years does that cover? How many years are we expecting for that to be in operation? And when that ends, who's responsible for maintaining that property? Does it become township responsibility?
I think the landfill can probably answer that question the best landfill I've ever known.
The estimated life is about 20 years.
About 20 years is what we believe at this point.
And in terms of responsibility, we have post-closure obligations as the permit holder for 30-plus years. It has to be bonded with very specific bonding calculations that are submitted with the DEP permit. So we will be responsible as the permit holder, and everything will be bonded with DEP.
Okay, so all of this change is over 20 years of patch renovation? Is that correct?
The anticipated life of the phase five expansion is about 20 years.
Thank you.
Is it worth it?
Thank you. All right, yeah, Mr. Zinn.
Mark Ozemack, Lower Salkin. She just gave me an idea. When I used to work in the quarries, stone quarries, dirt quarries, whatever, when those quarries are done, they're required to put the land back the way they found it. That's one of their requirements. What is the requirement for the landfill when they're done with it?
I think as we had discussed before, there's a closure, a final closure plan that has to be approved by DEP. And then once the landfill is closed, we have ongoing maintenance obligations, and it's bonded financially with DEP.
And those water quality monitoring requirements, those continue as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, and once you're closed, and everything's taken care of, and DEP approves all that, you remain the owner of the land, correct?
Yes.
And you keep paying your share of the taxes on the land, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Any other comments, questions, residents? I'm going to make a motion to recommend granting the waivers identified in the Hanover Review Letter dated October 19th, 2023.
Lincoln, unless you have something to add, I will second that motion.
Is that a good motion?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the second.
Motion to recommend granting the waivers identified in the Hanover Review Letter dated October 19th, 2023. Right, that's the date?
Yeah, that's correct, make a motion to grant it.
Any discussion on the motion?
The only thing I would like to add is that, based on intentional engineers' comments, the motions requested are consistent with the, the use that's proposed, and is consistent with what the waivers ran into the prior application.
And there, there is actually a Martin letter, the letter dates, requesting a reason?
In the application pack.
Yeah, we should probably reference in the motion.
Just add, add to the motion, including the, you know, the waivers requested as identified in the March, Martin Review Letter, date to be filled in by Jim.
Yeah.
It's in the supporting documents.
It's in submission.
I'll add what might serve my motion.
I'll second it.
No further discussions, all in favor? And then I'll make a second motion to recommend preliminary plan approval, subject to compliance with the October 19th, 2023, the Hanover Review Letter. Recommend preliminary plan approval, subject to compliance. Good second. I'll second it. Give a motion. And a second, any discussion? No further discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the August 24th, 2023 events. Got a motion for approval?
I was, I was here, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that, I was here. All in favor of approval of the August 24th events? Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comments regarding non-agenda items. Mr. Grass.
I'm from Grass, Black River Road, resident 66 years, 58 of Black River. The Fire Lane, I'm not against development, but I urge the planning commission to take a real serious look at stormwater management. Right now, what's coming down there is a good-sized stream that was on the athlete named Black River. There's approximately 12 homes on Black, on Fire Lane right now. If we're going to add 40, take away this, this pervious service and put impervious for 40 homes and roads and whatnot else, the amount of water might quadruple. If it's quadrupled, Black River is never going to handle it. There was a project put into place, Brian engineered it, a great project, but it was never really put in. They put in deeper gutters, which helped tremendously, yes. If we're going to put 40 townhouses in, which again, I'm not against development, it could even look good. Put a nice forest there now, but eh, whatever. But the water, take a pretty serious look, please. Maybe you need to incorporate a, a system there that brings back the Black River system, put the two together. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, all right. I just want to say about the Fire Lanes, the plan was made publicly. You know, we're, you know, we're required to review plans that developers or residents put before us. And, you know, we can't control that, when they come, or what, what it is, until, until it's formally submitted, and we'll see. But all those concerns, I think, are valid concerns, and I hope they're thoroughly addressed.
Yes, I appreciate that, and again, with the, the deeper gutter you put in, that Brian engineered, helps tremendously. But if we're going to quadruple the amount of water coming down Fire, Fire Lane, the debris comes down, it isn't going to handle it. Okay, but, yes, okay, seriously, please, and I'm sure you will, but I just want you to reemphasize that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none? Oh, we won't. Sir, are you a resident?
Affirmative, yes, I'm actually a resident on Fire Lane.
Okay, say your name.
My name is Scott Levin, live at the top of Fire Lane, been here about five years. Moved here from North Jersey to kind of find that quieter lifestyle. Starkly opposed to this expansion here on the Fire Lane. This is a residential neighborhood here, the traffic pattern is already pretty aggressive as it is, and speeding is a major concern. There's tons of wildlife on this, on this property, that you're talking about here. They flood over to my property, believe it or not. But as it is, the traffic patterns are really unacceptable for the 12 houses that are on here, and we're looking to add essentially, from what I can see here, 40 new homes, 42 new homes. That approximately puts another, say on the low side, 80 to 160 cars worth of traffic on the street here. To this gentleman's point behind me, the water is definitely unacceptable during almost any amount of precipitation on Black River Road. It just comes right from Fire Lane and right onto Black River, and in the winter, that becomes an icebed. So really, I know you guys are in huge diligence on this, and the traffic pattern is definitely a concern, and speeding on that road, and adding 40 new homes, 42, that's proposed right now, I'm sure there's a lot of adjustments to be made accordingly, but it is definitely a concern for my family, like, today I lobbied a lot of my street neighbors and stuff like that, went door to door, and I know that they are going to have many reservations with this expansion as well, so I'm here for the state on this one, so.
Having, having been through this before, you know, a lot of times, these developers come in and they're asking for the whole wall wax.
Totally, I understand.
Whatever, usually, I'm not saying anything about this one specifically, but usually things would scale back. It's a negotiating, not a negotiation, but...
This is a, you know, but still, it's definitely...
Yeah, I agree.
It's scary when you hear that 40 new homes on a street of 12 are going to be going up that soon. This is a residential neighborhood here, that kind of takes the residential, and my, that small home field on the street away from it. And that's kind of what I was looking for when I bought this place, and I know there will be many other people that are going to speak behind me eventually about this. So is there a way to get notifications on when new updates or events come? Because as far as I'm concerned, I felt gassed on this a little bit. I looked at the, you know, the news article this morning, and I had 10 hours, I felt, to prepare to give a speech here essentially saying, this is not something I'll be wanting in our, in our neighborhood. So how can I get updates to go and know that, hey, someone's going to be coming here with more preliminary paperwork to go and present to you guys, that we can know, that I can go and... That we can know, that I can go and tell my neighbors here respectfully and say, hey, can we go and have a fighting chance at this? This is Boyle, I'm from, I can see that, is coming and picked up this contract or is looking to develop here. They are, have bigger pockets than I do, but, you know, I would like to at least have a fighting chance to say as a resident here of what I would like on my street here. You know, this is a neighborhood that we, a lot of us know each other and we talk, and we like to keep it that way. So even if it's scaled back, we'd like to be scaled back to a residential, you know, single-family homes like the rest of the street is. So, thank you so much.
The planning agenda comes out when, usually the, the week before...
The week before the meeting.
The week before the meeting, it's on the township website.
You can sign up.
Was this on there from this week?
It wasn't on the original one.
Okay, because I saw it, it just went on last night or Wednesday.
And that's one of the reasons why...
And that's why it's longer to make as a resident that feel like I got gassed and I don't have an opportunity to prepare or say anything. And, you know, it's just, there's a lot of us in the way.
You can also put your email in to receive the agenda. So every time it would change, you would get an email.
Okay. Okay. May I have some assistance after that to just kind of lead me in the right direction so I can learn how to do that properly? Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right. No additional comments. Move to adjournment, I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Sir, who sent you on?
Exactly. I went door-to-door, this is perfect. I tried to, I was trying to, because I was running through the door and, you know, the business is that you may not, you know, it's going to come to something, it's going to affect you. That's, you know, people are rallying initially. And that's exactly what I'm trying to do here. And my street has, is feeling fire now. And they really are. So, that was, that was you, the puncture. I appreciate that, because it's a major concern. This is a, it's a small street here. I can see, you know, during the winter times, the traffic. If you want to cut through it. How would I know? How would I? Just having a presentation. Watching work. That's probably, and that's rules. And that's not acceptable. Residents here, we can't, we can't turn it here. I mean, I moved from North Jersey, Fire Lane to...
It's possible, session, right?
I just, I just... So I don't want to say I'm... Uh, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Correct.
It's not...
The only thing to have is...
I, I list the first... I'm sure it will, and I will be present trying to gate one or, or working behind it. Because I spoke to, I went right down Black River too.